Any other intentions or corrections? Director, you're okay with this?
Yeah.
You're okay with this? All right, it's been made a motion, it's seconded, we're gonna go with the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, all who abstain. Motion passes six zero zero. Approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion.
All seconded.
Did you guys get the minutes?
Did you not?
I did not.
Everybody else got it? All right. It was moved by Director Holt and seconded by Director Garrett to approve the minutes from the regular August fourth meeting on eight forty-four, the EDIAM superintendent evaluation on eight thirty-one, the policy meeting on September twenty-second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, all who abstain. Motion passes five zero one. Appreciation, recognition, and presentations. Recognizing, oh, we got any of them? Phil does, Phil does, all right.
I want to recognize a specific goal upset. And you met a while back, and you talked about an outdoor classroom for the elementary school. And it was like a perfect idea, a perfect situation. So he, with the help of his father, mother, and I don't know if Andrew was involved or not, they all pitched together as a family, pulled the initiative and his Eagle Scout project. But the goal was to get it completed by start of the school year. And it's out there, it's beautifully done, and it's just perfect timing because we've got classes, like our music teacher can go out and bring the music class out there and they can actually sing for music. And so we're using it, both sides are supervised, and it's done expertly. So it's just been a great addition to the family, or to the school, by the family. And it wasn't cheap, it was costly, they did it right. So we wanted to recognize that call for the contribution made to this project.
Thank you. Do we have any pictures of that at all?
It took some, could you do this?
Maybe, maybe a good place would be in the next newsletter or something.
I need to do some of the record too.
Yeah.
Do you have the pictures?
Any other recognition or appreciation recognition or presentation?
He just did, he did put a picture of the class, I did take a couple pictures of the music class on Facebook, some of that out.
Well. All right, moving on, recognition of citizens for input purposes. Anybody wanna speak?
I have a name on my name here in the last bit. Our public can speak out, or I'm here for the agenda, I don't remember how, but it helps.
I won't say you can't speak here, but why don't you speak for what you're here for so we can talk about all of it, and then we'll talk about more. We'll hear what you have to say then, now.
Derek, can I, what do you guys think of the address of work, can you tell us your name?
Oh.
Oh, we didn't have a number. I'm here for, um, that's on the agenda.
Yep.
Um, my feeling is that, um, this has been for seven years plus, having had a very busy time. And for one person to make a decision, or two people that are making a decision, that has an impact on over a hundred students in our district. Um, I didn't feel more than used to be aware of what's happening, um, not something that you should just look up in the front. And have wanted to be able to say this is what's happened, and basically you're, you're the point. So I just wanted to bring that forward.
Thank you. Does anybody else wanna speak on that subject? Does anybody else wanna speak on a different subject? Go ahead, I don't know who you are though.
I'm at the next, I almost did the third of the vision of the music program. I understand that you guys do it usually do it in the morning, if I may say, if that is being what the physical timing, you know, maybe because which is time to be after, I don't know, for the, for the painting, and we don't know what you. I just, this, we need to make sure that mine doesn't happen, but COVID as a student.
Anybody else? Yes?
This is all. Um, I have worked with the program and, built it approach to being, I had a communication with him since the end of the conference about us, we're giving time and kind of, you know, with him of, how we can work together, make progress this year. Um, the fifteenth of September, so we had been, you know, making plans to go ahead through these plans. Um, I had agreed, they told, I'm not gonna start, um, every, every, every meeting, because we have a lot of new students. Um, and then September fifteenth, um, they told me that they just were not comfortable allowing students, um, come over. With safety concerns for this year, but that we also, we kind of like to visit, very much like to continue it. Part of the, um, Bob Rodger, that's certainly has also, like, we not do it for this year. Um, my concern to me that yes, it has been a part of this community for many years. And so, you know, just wanting to know who's this good and this is, allow that to continue. Um, you know, from my memory, we had the opportunity to send our kids back to school. Um, not everybody, especially in the area, has that, um, proximity of the school to the church, made it very convenient. I understand the teachers concerned, that even the morning, that that's the fourth line to be with students. Um, so, you know, and even this year, if it can happen for this year, we're ready, we will be in October. I just want to see where the board is at, are you willing to support it in future years? That we can look at it again, and we can do it in the afternoon. This does affect a lot of our families in this area, the hardworking families, and to take their kids, young kids away from home one more night on the week. I just don't feel like it's the best interest of the families. Um, someone from another school that does have a late time, they're like, why would you want the community to be helping teach our young people morals and values? And you're just noticing that young people don't have enough one-on-one time as adults. That this gives them another opportunity to talk one-on-one, to build relationships with people in our community. This was a good thing for our people that volunteer with it, and a good thing for our people's families. I would just like more to hear your opinion on it, and to know that we would be able to look at it again.
Good, thank you. Does anybody else have anything to say?
Um, we, we do have this on our agenda, it's towards the end of the meeting. We will discuss it.
Last call.
I need to clear a call, and I'm here for those school lunches, is that a good for them? I sent all of you a message on email.
It is not on our agenda.
I sent all four members an email.
Derek.
Yes?
I was, I was just wanted to be, um, yes, Miss, Miss Joel has addressed me and the board for them, I believe, with the administration regarding the lunches. I am not a permanent coach, and we are, we are going from venue, um, and looking down the option, I don't know. So we are putting that together, I just got a, um, a template draft today, they come up from our force, we started. So I just think that we take care of it, we, we, if we're able to see, and that's another, you know, the, the, and I also, I consider, unless I, you know, so we are.
There's nothing going on for the year.
Yeah, I think we've gone with last year, I'm not, not being so bad, yeah, we probably haven't been over there.
Okay, this is a simple picture of this little lunch, would you like to see it?
I seen it, you know.
If I don't, if I don't have any.
Yes.
I mean, this is not following, it's, it's a story.
All I'm trying to tell you are that we are definitely doing this too.
A cup, a little cup of cold sauce, continue ourselves, I think that I'm doing it.
Why are the kids getting served food in a plastic thing, you beg?
Please say it.
Ryan Scholz.
Okay, what was your question?
Why are the kids getting served food in a plastic thing, you beg, and not on a tray?
In, in court, and then this.
All right, sure, go ahead.
This summer, with, um, social distancing and the lack of room in the elementary school, um, it was decided that administration on direction of Minnesota Department of Education, um, upcoming notes with different scenarios, if we have a not cafeteria space, we would definitely be serving lunches in the cafeteria on a tray. But being that all lunches in our system serve in the classroom, we are in more of a rag and roll situation, so it's kind of, it's not permanent by any standard, but we have one day, we're studying, and all our rooms are carpeted, um, I don't think the teachers are not wanting to clean up all, anything, or all spills that happened in the room. So with the meeting discussion with the administration, it was decided that we would go to a rag and roll option until we got other directions or the types turned. So that's why we didn't serve in the plastic tray. We thought about trays, but the trays are very, um, children are actually from first, second, third grade, and, and, and a lot of skills to clean up. So this was, this was the, the way that we decided to go with, help them to lunch, so the time.
I don't, I didn't realize that, but other schools are being served a full meal on a tray.
They are also being served in the cafeteria, not in the classroom. I have reached out to the districts that you and I have had before, and their children are being served in the cafeteria. They've done, some of the other districts have a lot of space, so they can cycle their kids, and they're not social distancing. We don't have that option, they don't listen to me, we have a very small cafeteria. So with the discussions with Dr. Pravada and Mrs. Phelps, that was decided that they would be in the classrooms. Yeah, I think that cafeteria can only hold thirty-five dollars, nine, thirty-five dollars, if they're not considering, so.
You, you can't tell me this is a nutritional fail. You can't tell me it needs to retire. It's very sad, because this, uh, four chicken strips, a couple of carrots, and apples, this apple meat. Those kids in this district that need more than this.
We addressed the, we have addressed the, the curve down the tree, on the portion sizes. So we, I'm hoping that that's gonna address, but when he's not happy, I did send that to our, our head coach, and that is our ultimate address. You were right, we should have gotten five, not four, I know you, I don't think that's not enough either, but that is, five chicken strips meets the standard.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, he said that you're gonna, he's looking, you were then using this, when did he, whenever he could, he would receive this change?
When did I prove it? So I just, I did, they came to me like three thirty this afternoon in fall. I will be honest, it's my first day of audit, so I didn't, I don't admit that five o'clock this afternoon. It looks good, the whole tech post liked it, so we will implement it, um, it starts October, October first.
Mr. Phelps? Yeah, um, and I go back to precisely cafeteria, that is the biggest problem. Uh, let's say, and, and I pursue, uh, I've received many complaints about kids not having enough time to eat. You think thirty kids in that classroom, twenty minutes minimum, okay? Uh, if we can cut it down to there, over at the, uh, elementary school, that would mean that we have to have sixteen twenty-minute periods, which would take over four and a half, almost four and a half hours to serve everybody in the cafeteria. I just want you to be aware of that. And that's what the decision, why the decision was made to have food in the room. And that's right, there are other places that have much larger cafeteria.
Fifteen ninety's in the gym.
I know that Holyford just finished remodeling everything, and larger, I know that same thing here. Right now, if you saw next door, and here, this, this room is filled, our, uh, some, other, our, uh, self, uh, uh, gym, thank you, our self gym is packed with these tables, with two at a table, to meet the required. Um, if, we have to have six feet for lunch because people don't wear masks.
Would you not use the gym also in the elementary school?
That is also something we talked about, go ahead, help.
Be able to run our gym classes and also lunch at the same time.
We're being recorded, so what we just do now?
Please. But there isn't time to run our gym classes and lunch at the same time. The gym, the PD classes are running all day other than a half hour of lunch. I also want to add that what we're doing, I'm not discussing the food part, because, I mean, just to look at the quality of the food. Having the children have their breakfast in the rooms, and their lunches in the rooms, it's just really working well. They come in, uh, the bus is getting off in the morning, they write their classrooms, breakfast is served. It's peaceful, everything, the kids are in their own groups, there is many mixing, one of our goals is to keep a minimum mixing with kids throughout the day, so there is a handful of words. That's not well, I think if you ask the teachers, they'd want to continue with the breakfast in the room, just because it's working so well. The lunches also work really well. We've always had overcrowded cafeteria, now the children come get their lunches, they go back to their rooms, they've got more time to eat, it's more peaceful. Teachers, uh, take the children out individually for the recesses, so they're actually once doing the recess, two or three times, depending, uh, on what's going on in the third classroom. So as far as the peacefulness, time for the kids to eat, getting outside and not being mixed with a hundred kids together, all of that is working really well. I think quality of the food, something that needs to get looked at, as far as the structure, how we're doing it. I'm gonna have people saying, why can't we do this all the time, it works so well, we've never had such a peaceful school. And there have been zero discipline problems, um, related to the playground, cafeteria since the beginning of the year, normally they're probably the sixth. And that's a problem there are in the problem, so it's really made a positive difference to the school. And we just gotta figure out how to work with it, quality of lunch.
I don't think it's a quality, it's economy. Yeah, and we are addressing that, there will be more.
Not to be even, but the huge people that are in the dorms.
It's green.
It's green.
For a first grader to feel it.
And a first grader to feel it, no one, no first grader to feel it, no one.
Mark?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I've, uh, received a lot of complaints, and it's been about the quality of the food. It's not been, uh, the, you know, the size of the room, it's been the size of the food and the table food. I had a complaint that the pizza that they got was smashed down so bad that all they had was, was a crust when they got done, when they got it served. So it hasn't been the room size, it's been the same thing that we've been getting complaints about for two years.
Anybody else got something they wanna get out of the chest right now? Last call, we're gonna move on. All right, moving on. Reports and news, business to this manager's report.
I was, I was.
Business manager's report.
I am sorry, I was directing my superintendent to ask questions on the board later, because I haven't gotten quite the complaints that you guys had, or that we've sent them to, so we could have addressed this earlier. Um, I would have, instead of bringing it on at a meeting, if I was asking more of this earlier, I could have addressed it with my head coach and completely, absolutely, told that on the board. That being said, um, I am in first day of audit, so it's been a very, very busy day for me. Um, we are, we have closed nineteen twenty, we will have a fair window of guard, not large, fairly good unbalance this year. Um, we did save some money, obviously, last year with, um, going to distance learning in March, um, you know, transportation to save money, with utilities to save money, but we will, that, that, that's things like that, so, um, I'm working through that with our auditors. Um, I did meet with our finance committee last week, we will be meeting again, um, to, to go over that, but I got into the audit first. Um, yeah, that's, that's what I'm hoping on this week, we will be talking a little bit later, I guess next maybe, about the levy, it's that time of year again. Um, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that when we get to the levy part of the conversation, so. I, anybody have questions for me? Thank you.
Super manager's report.
Yeah, um, the first thing, uh, and I, I let the board know this, but the public's here, and also I want everybody to know, we're losing our RN. Um, the reason we're losing our RN, she lives up by Randy, and, uh, she has lost her daycare. Uh, she has a five-month-year-old individual, and, uh, she doesn't have it, so she will be taking care of her own child. If anybody knows, any, anybody that can take care of a five-month-year-old, I would ask you please to communicate that, so we can get that point. We've had to repost it, and we'll be re-interviewing as soon as possible. Um, COVID, I wanna give you an update, um, we get notified, I get notified sometimes daily with, uh, COVID information. Our coordinator, Tony, or Anthony Newman, is our coordinator, he works with the state, he works with the region, he works with the county. Uh, he works with the information we continually get. Even on Thursday, our last briefing, peers have gone up by, uh, I was four, a little falls has gone up a little more. But turn around today, after three more days, we also get briefed on Monday, peers and little falls have gone up more, little falls especially. Uh, some questions come up with how do we decide when we change our format and go to a different, uh, thing? It's not just by the county, and then little by little, and I think that was the last thing that came up, what was more local information, and that's exactly what's happening up here. They have moved into, uh, distance learning for the fifth grade only, uh, currently. Their number's going up, it could change. Uh, they did that when they found out they had individuals in their school, and it was in their fifth grade class. So they took the fifth grade classes and, and put it into distance learning, through the process that we've gone through before. Little falls, let everyone know, they've had some individuals in their schools that, uh, also have had COVID, and they have gone, or they will be going to hybrid in one of the elementary schools, and also in their high school or middle school. Those things can change though, they can change in a moment's notice, and, uh, both of those could have more outbreaks than we could start to see them here. So far, I'm smiling because Walton went down one, we had two active cases, I'm glad they're doing actively. Um, both, Bowman went, uh, up, Moles rather went up, a couple, but two of them will be coming off this week. And then Rice has had a number of cases, but in their case, uh, they've had different children checked, and it's not COVID. There, uh, is some, uh, tool going around, and also what shows up quite a bit, I've commented on that, uh, is this seems to be a good time for allergies to kick in. Don and I, who both attest to that, are constantly, uh, sinus stuff up and everything else, sorry to reveal it, don't assume me on that information. Uh, and also Tony has done a great job with, uh, cases that have shown up in what we call tracking, and they trace back. And also we have to isolate people or put them in quarantine, uh, it's just hard with COVID, all I want you to understand that. Um, it was revealed to us this, uh, week, and I knew a lot, it's something I got from Gayleene, and was still trying to work some problems out by notifying parents. Now, right now, if we had everybody that said they've broken their kid or find a way to get them here, we wouldn't have a problem, as most of you realize, that, that the secondary could go into hybrid, and by the design, we don't have to put the elementary, they go into a higher level. The problem right now is the bus, because a lot of people, uh, didn't follow through with that, and we can only go by what we have. We're gonna have to do both in hybrid right now. Uh, I asked people that they contact the Gayleene and let her know, can't guess if we put out a survey, the last survey, no less, what we can do. The reason we put out those surveys is so we could design different types of learning and, and how we would use it. But the first survey did not reflect on the reality that happened at the beginning of this year, I want you to understand. Phil and I are going to be meeting tomorrow as an administrative team to see and have some other ideas, how we can approach that. And as most of you realize, whatever we can do, we certainly want to keep the lower grade more likely, and we're gonna do the best we can to keep them in school all the time. Uh, moving from there, uh, just to make sure it covered those points. Uh, yep, I did that. There's another piece that came out late last week, it had actually, Tony will address some of this, to do with what we call a contact tracing. Again, but how much contact time? Originally, we took it, we broke it down to fifteen minutes, Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, fifteen minutes amount of contact time that were within six feet of each other. Sounds reasonable, and that's what we based everything on. As the last week, the CDC and, uh, Minnesota Department of Health said, it's accumulative over days. So let's say I, I talked, uh, Tony Val for an hour, or not an hour, five minutes this day, ten minutes tomorrow, uh, I come down with COVID, he would have to quarantine. So that's, that's a whole different scenario. But it all comes back to what we're doing as, as a community, we must be doing something right, right now, and hopefully it continues, that we only have one face. And, uh, hopefully that continues, but it falls on all of us, it falls on our students. One thing, they've, they've been unbelievable about wearing masks. Uh, they've just been very cooperative, once in a while you forget, like the other day, Don came in, I didn't realize I had lined up, and I was having a conversation, and she corrected me. Uh, and, and that's kind of how we have to work as a team to make this work. But it does no good if they're masked all day, and then afterwards, they all find in the car, unmasked, and talk with each other, that just ups the chances. My goal is, is not to go to business learning. I also have to share this with you, I know this is happening at the secondary, I haven't had a chance to talk with Phil, but sometimes when we do have families, when they, it shows symptoms, they have to go into quarantine. Right now, what our teachers are doing in the secondary is very well, uh, from what the feedback I'm getting, instead of being marked absent, to get a set stop. instead of being marked absent, getting set stop, is what our teachers are telling so many of our kids, I can't speak for all of them, is very simply, if you're home under quarantine, it's okay. We'll put you in as distance learner, as long as you're making that contact and working with us. Uh, and I do want to share that with you, uh, very much so. I've, uh, attended a law conference virtually on Friday, it was all day Friday. Uh, and, uh, afternoon was dedicated with COVID nineteen. With that said, so much of that was based on what's going on in the schools and especially with special ed law and how we have to approach that. And there's so many little pieces to that, really we spent an awful lot of time. Some of the things that we do here, you might say, wow, or you might not believe in what we're doing, but we have to follow what the state has told us we must do. And if we don't, then we're not held harmless and we're also presenting an unsafe environment, uh, which can be another cold problem, so I want you to realize that. Later on, uh, we'll have the A D speak about sports, that's not the agenda as well. And I also want to say, we'll have a discussion, Phil will enter into that on a religious release time. But this started when we got talking a hundred to keep our kids separated and then came back to talk about religion. That's where we're going with that. So with that, any, any other questions, anyone have? Ellen?
I do have a question. So Tony, when you're working on the committee for the COVID, um, I guess my question lies, if everyone's masking, and these, you know, like the, for the second day of school, when these kids were in contact with someone who was positive, but they're masked, do they have any advice on that? I mean, if that's what's preventing the spread?
The, the, the city tree says, and the explanation says, no matter your mask or not, within your six foot bubble, first could be people behind you, the person that's positive. If you're within that six foot bubble mask or not, you consider it both not. That, that's what the N H tells me.
Okay, just, just like with the buses, I, I was under the assumption, you know, that that might be an issue because if everyone was masked, it could be, but it's, it's involved, so you have to be six feet away and a mask. Or that's a fair portrayal.
And that is the problem with the busing when we moved to hybrid. One school, we were hoping that if one school went hybrid, the other school could, didn't have to separate by six feet on bus. Uh, as soon as we go to hybrid, families can sit together and that's how, uh, it's been set up. That Phil and Joel had worked, that the families will stay together. One thing, good news for us, in that more people decided not to distance learn. And so they are attending. There's a second problem with, with Joel. And originally, looking at the data, we said, you know, we've got enough room that we can do senior high for two days, then middle school for two days. As it turned out, we don't have enough space to do that because enough people are attending and separate by that much. So we are gonna have to change that plan to go alphabetically. And they've already worked out a list for that, uh, that if we are in hybrid, that families are together.
Thanks, Tony.
It's just that anybody doesn't realize, it's how where I live, that's everybody. Do you have anything else to, 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 to? You have the muscle, we feel that.
Everyone can sit next to everybody. Well, I, I did happen to love those off the children, uh, like for a different reason.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's amazing the program Gayleene has and what she works with, it readjusts and hopefully deepens our area of patience. She's worked out alternate plans already in advance. And as we start to count the numbers, depending how many people come in and say, hey, you know, we're gonna bring our child, she cannot instantly, it takes time, garbage in, garbage out, that she will be able to adjust and make a difference.
All right, moving on, principals' reports. Phil?
The number one priority is to be able to keep the children and the adults safe. It's kind of always the number one priority, but that's really been a priority for our. And so from the beginning, when the children step off the bus, till the end of the day, when they get on the bus, everything's organized around the safety of the children. The classrooms look like, classrooms probably looked in the nineteen fifties, they're all straight rows, students at their desks. That's where they eat their breakfast, that's where they eat their lunch. That's how the teaching is done, we do allow small group work, three or four at a time, around the table, spread out. And it's very, very, uh, strategic. They're getting on the bus, starting with the older grades, coming back, it's almost like a parade, the older grades, fifth grade starts, fourth grade follows, third grade. So it's very organized, keeping kids as best we can, to distance, getting on the bus. At the end of the day, we have lots of people picking up the students, it takes about five or six of us. The cars are lining up, at least one day, all the way to the bridge on Center Street and down Riverwood across the school. But we have a system where it's five hours at a time, we call the kids out, one by one, they put the cars, that's where we go. We got pretty good, uh, first few was like three twenty, now it's been between three oh eight and three tenths to school. Buses are leaving, a little before three, we've got all the parents out of there, they can't have it. It takes a lot of teamwork, working together. And again, the teachers down there, really on their own, they wouldn't have to do it. We, uh, yep, this second, we have, uh, volunteered to do recess for the students so that we can keep recess separate cohorts. The kids, uh, other than one challenging situation, the kids have been great with a mask, showing the parents. And because of all, like, anything that happens like this, there's a crisis, you know, Chinese, proper crisis, there's danger, but there's opportunity. We're seeing lots of different ways we can run the school, be much more peaceful, great improvement, behavior. And it's people voluntarily wanting to do things to make it work. So I just have a lot of positive things, uh, to say about the staff and how everybody's worked. And just, again, to assure you, I'm willing to hope always to keep everybody as safe as possible. Yes?
I just want to say, uh, thank God it's amazing and you should keep that, uh, I think so, Russ, it's great. You think of the time it's been a while? I don't actually think, I mean, I'm saying it is great.
Thank you.
Very, I think we should really keep that up, so long as I can.
Yeah, it depends, uh, a lot of people volunteering time, we have a great system set up. Where you have kids sitting by grade levels, by family, if someone's calling in, we got walkie talkie disorder. And it's pretty efficient and, yeah, for, to keep everything safe. Is there a question?
Um, when you say to keep the kids safe, you mean safe from catching COVID nineteen?
Well, safe always, no matter what, it's the number one priority. And then also doing everything we can to minimize any spread. So we're keeping sanitation procedures, everybody, getting everybody on the same page, working together, being mindful of making, it's still, still very enjoyable, it's still been like the school, but being mindful of practices, the, uh, recommendations, requirements, and how we can make that work integrated together as a school and everybody being on the same page. So when I say safe, it's bigger, the COVID, that's just heightening awareness. We are really, I really feel it's responsible for those children coming to school and having a good experience, going home safely and hopefully, you know, not being in situations where they're unnecessarily exposed to the spread. The other thing, everyone's excited because the twins are in the playoffs.
Yeah, I was just, uh, I was just looking here, COVID, I think, um, tween ages of five and nineteen years old, zero people have died in Minnesota from COVID nineteen. So that's our age group we're dealing with. Let's say, you know, we're keeping.
No, it extends to the adults too. We have, uh, lots of adults in both buildings and, uh, they are, are vulnerable. I'm not gonna say we haven't had situations, we've had people that have, have to get tested and haven't been watched. So, uh, yes, uh, to what you said, but the school's bigger from that. We have many people, uh, different age groups, different physical situations. And we read and hear about people that get COVID, the symptoms are minor, we read about other people, uh, where it's hysterical, they're dying, they're getting lymphed and mutated. Depending on how that gets in your body and how that spreads. So by safe, I mean taking it very, very seriously and it's feeling very responsible. We are doing everything we possibly can to still have a well function in school. But I did want to add, the twins are in the playoffs, so there's probably more sites involved, wearing red, blue, or anything else. They're not twenty eight.
Great, Joel?
Um, my favorite moment from the first three weeks is I came trucking out of the office like this and the kid said to me, I think it was my sixth grader, Mr. Spence, put your mask on. Um, I expected to have more trouble, um, with high school kids in the mask, but to be honest, they have been great. Uh, they've done a nice job with it. I mean, they, you haven't found a gold mask up once in a while to go outside for, outside of the football field after luncheon. When they come in, they, you know, some of them, their mask in their pocket or they dropped it on the grass or, um, they've had the, uh, but, you know what, very, very little, uh, I think, I was hoping that the draw of being able to come back and view your friends and, uh, participate in activities at whatever level they were gonna be able to and, and, and have that connection again would be there. And I, uh, I've witnessed that, uh, we have lunch in here and we also have lunch, uh, there's sixty, coming, it was sixty or sixty-five tables set up in the south gym. And so we have, some of our, we have, we have three lunches, a hundred and ninety students per lunch. And you can see the yellow X's on the floor. As they come in, they go through the center and then they go through and then they come out the side doors and they either go to that gym where they, where they sit in here at the tables. And the first day, getting the X, the board, stay, stay on the X's and just they kind of go through one at a time. That was a little tricky the first day to get them to think that way and they're excited to see each other, but now you don't even have to say it to them. They know, they, they know what we have it kind of paced out as how long it takes us to get through lunch. Um, and they've done a very nice job, the kids are resilient, um, they, they've really responded, um, like I was expecting. Uh, we're looking, Mr. Kopicus is trying to schedule a band concert. Um, he was looking at late October outside at, in the evening. And I think we've successfully talked away from that plan, knowing the weather in October. Uh, I believe we'll do some sort of virtual band concert with multiple cameras and sound and do it in the gym and have it be a live broadcast of the band concert when that time comes. So we're working on some of those changes. I will be putting out, we're meeting tomorrow, but the hybrid, the hybrid plan in case. I want parents to have the knowledge of what's going to happen. Um, we'd be looking at going A through M, two days, and N through Z, last name, two days. And keeping all the kids together, if there's multiple families in each school that they have the same, uh, that they're, they're going to school the same days. Uh, if there's family groups that have different last names, blended families, they would all go to school the same day. So we're working on those plans to make that happen. Um, working with Gayleene on transportation to make sure that we're in compliance with fifty percent on the buses. And it looks like we're, we're gonna be okay, we had to do a little, um, adjustment to that. But, uh, those plans are in full swing and a lot of it happens behind the scenes without anyone seeing it. Uh, as the, you know, teachers are busy teaching and, uh, and so we're trying to keep the, the planning, keep the days rolling smoothly. So, um, I've been excited about the start and like I said, it's gone, um, as well as I would have expected.
How's the block scheduling?
Kids report that they enjoy the block scheduling. Um, it is, there's far less traffic in the building with only, with only four classes. Uh, so the building is very quiet for much of the day. Um, it's also very quiet when you only have lunch here and the comments up there. If you've ever been in there for a banquet or for any type of meeting, that room might be the worst room I've ever been in in terms of sound amplification, it is just like a, like talking and copying. Um, now that lunches are down here, that, that end of the building is very, very quiet. The only other problem you have with the comments is it's kind of the heartbeat of the building, you go to all five wings from one room. And so if you're not paying, you can have kids build, bring out all different parts of the building from that spot. But lunch down here, that end of the building is very, very quiet. And that is very nice for, uh, the classrooms and the teachers in that area to be able to, uh, there's just very little foot traffic in the hallways, especially.
Yes, one observation is things, things seem a lot tougher also in high school and middle school. In other words, there isn't as much loudness, general excitement. It's not that the kids are grabbed, uh, I think it's just, it's, being in a block is more relaxed. It's not much urgent in the next class, uh, just my observation, in my opinion.
Great, any other questions? All right, moving on, discussion, information and action items, claims and accounts and financials.
I'll make a motion. Okay.
There's movement by Director Garrett and second by Director Director Gerard to approve the accounts payables and receivables and employee reimbursements as attached and approve all other financial reports as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing, done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. I'll abstain. Motion passed as six zero zero. Uh, couple of property tax levy. Don, do you want to speak to this?
Yep. That time of year, we have to get the two questions proposed. This is the actual, this is the, the actual levy we certified and done with our, through the taxation meeting. But we have to do this every year in September, so we can give the numbers, the levy numbers to the state so they can give us the counties for your property tax statements in several areas ago, end of December. So this happens every year, I will say that we are done in the jungle fund levy. Um, we're done with about five percent, um, negative adjustments, this is a negative adjustments. We had, um, from the, the C F change, value ratios and equity. Um, so we had a, we had a forty five thousand dollar negative adjustment in our equity revenue. Um, and we still have one adjustment now to F M because of the age of the building. We put that, we remodeled and last year we had that adjustment, this should be the last adjustment though, so we are done with five percent. Um, so that, everything else is good, debt service is our mortgage payment, that's an automatic levy. And, um, community services are, are the community effort preschool and we'll do some, um, um, home visits for our little guys in Yale and commute enrichment. That's the, that's what I can community service on, so, um, that's where we're at right now. So we will, um, propose to certify max again, we know it's done from last year. And then during through the taxation, we will actually do the actual certifying of the levy to get it to the state or auditors or for their, uh, informed to get it to on your proposed property tax statements.
Are there questions?
I have, I have.
Yep.
Um, so we're gonna certify the maximum allowable by law.
Yes, that's what I proposed, that's what I always proposed.
Okay, and that's what, uh, the motion would say, uh, propose taxation, you proposed a maximum.
We actually just, we put on, one state tells us to put on people's board agenda, but yes, that gets up to me to tell you it's maximum.
And, uh, but you said we don't have to take the maximum from everybody.
No, if there are adjustments, you guys said under levy, then you need to tell me and I have to contact them. If there are adjustments, you guys said under levy, then you need to tell me and I have to contact you and you need to say you're under levy.
Okay. Um, you've said that every year for less.
Yep.
As long as you've been doing it. Um, have we ever taken the less than the maximum?
Not, I don't think we ever have in this one. I think we've always certified max. But that's a decision that if we want to get the community together in future, if you want to level it all. But keep in mind seventy, over seventy percent of this levy that's certified, we can't under levy that. That's our small issue. So thirty percent of it is our agenda and our community service. So you can under levy that, that is, that is a worth talking to, but has to be a majority vote. But yes, you are right, Mr. Gerard. We have never, we have never not certified max. So we can definitely even have some more conversation about that here between now and the, to the taxation if we choose well court or whatever actually. As a board, you feel the need to under levy. I would say I, I'm strong. I'll commit against that, but that's just, that's me being a financial person. Like, yes, you can have.
Now, to begin the board, direct some of this money in different directions. Did we say we want to hire a reading teacher for A through B?
No, no. Basically what happens is, that's what we can do with, uh, fund ballots. Like when I'm doing year end and I say I have these fund ballots, we can assign a fund balance to do stuff like that, but we can't under levy or stuff like that because basically the levy, levy is just a lump sum of money that we've proposed for taxpayers that goes into our general fund and unreserved and reserved accounts. But that's the time if you wanted to hire something like that, if that's what a board was looking at anyway, that's the time that like this year, we would say, if you want to assign so many dollars for something like that, it wouldn't be coming out. It would, it would be part of those levy dollars, but we can't just say we're gonna levy for a preschool, a leading teacher.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Don, now this is just a proposed tax levy.
Yes, this is correct.
That one itself.
Right.
Because that, that only happens after truth of taxation with public input.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, so that's, I think we should look at this as approved and proposed tax levy.
Yes, and that's what it is. That, that is just the proposal we have to send to the state, um, by September thirtieth. So that's why it's here every year this time of year. It's proposed. Now, we're proposing that we will levy max knowing that there could be under levies like Mr. Gerard had indicated. Um, that, and that's something we need to talk about as a board with the, with the, with the committee if you choose to under levy, but once those decisions are made, that it goes to a truth of taxation hearing, it's a public hearing. I, I go to that, um, at the December board meeting every year. Never see any public, we mark them up and it's a public hearing. And at that point, we certify whatever has been proposed and then certified. The dollar will be certified and sent to the state and to the others, or the board's county or our, our family, our whole lot.
Director Paul?
Don, um, maybe for the public that's here, could you just explain that levy money? I know, I've been on it, I've been on the board almost four years and I'm kind of starting to understand how this works. So just a short, you know, what, what it includes then, these little dollars.
Right. When we levy, we filter our, obviously, you know, when you get your property tax statement, those are our local levy dollars. And what we do is it comes off of, um, what's your estimated, um, it's, it's an evaluation on your property and you can stand that. Get, let, not any more complicated. It's off our estimate tax capacity that the county calculates. But what we do with those levy dollars, those are operating dollars in our general fund. Not all of it is in our unreserved. We also levy for projects for our long-term facilities. We levy property tax money for operating capital, um, which piggybacked off equity. So we get a portion of money to operate our unreserved in addition to the state giving us eight dollars. And when we levy for property tax, a lot of that is equalized through the state. So if we levy for, for like long-term facilities, which is our projects, we can equalize aid from the state. When we levy for operating dollars for operating capital, we also get, um, equalized. And most of our levy dollars, if the state says, if you levy for this, we will give you aid, a portion of aid to compensate for some of the levy. So we don't, um, if we levy for say, um, two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars or four hundred and forty-five of operating capital, part of that is levy, but part of that is aid. So you're not seeing the whole levy, you're not seeing, no, you're not getting levy on everything. You, it's just, it's a proponent that the state is saying, if you do this, we'll give you dollars. So basically you're getting assessed on your property tax and part of that is coming to the district to support education. Does that make sense? Or did I make a wrong call?
Which, which committee is it, Don?
I think we'll, we're on, um, I think it's gonna be a full board because I don't think that one committee can choose to under levy. That has to be a vote of a full board, but we can certainly have meetings to talk about it and then bring it to the board for board to collaborate to the finance committee.
That's, that's by the proper way, Chief Tom.
Yeah.
From the finance committee to the full board, that would be the proper channel, I would say. Director Gerard?
Um, I know part of that levy is to do building and voters approve that.
Yep.
So that's a done deal. You're gonna pay for that. Um, what part of it could we let the voters vote on?
Nothing. They've already voted on the property tax. Nothing else, there's nothing else. We don't have additional referendum dollars that are board approval. Everything, there's nothing that is board approval. Unless we wanted to have more referendum authority, which we don't. We don't have any board approval referendum authority.
So there's no optional local?
No, that's all board control. That's on you guys.
Well, if, if the board chose to, we could let the people vote.
No, that's also, that's all board approval. There's no border capacity for that.
That's not how I understand it.
Well, we can talk about that.
Local optional?
Local optional used to be that it was, uh, board approved. Last year it was really a part of the, um, board approval. That got, that got moved in by the state. You know, I would say was that last year done? Yes, for last year. It used to be board approved. It's not anymore. It's all, there were three hundred that used to be board approved and four twenty-four that used to be board approved as local optional. We had the capacity to be board approved. The state last year rolled that all into one board approval, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. That happened, um, with the last legislature, a year, two years ago. So that's the last year.
Twenty nineteen.
Yep.
So that's seven hundred and twenty-four dollars per pupil.
Yep. So right now we don't have any additional. I, I just wanna, I wanna make the public understand. I don't wanna make them understand. That when we say referendum authority, that means that we are looking for dollars. Right now the board has, it's, it is called local op, it's called a, a local optional, but it's board approved levy dollars. That's what they can under levy if they wish. Um, it used to be three hundred. That was a tier one board approval only. And there used to be a local optional. In the soft per pupil unit, we give these dollars per adjusted pupil unit. And in the legislature that closed for eighteen nineteen for nineteen twenty, they rolled that all into one. That would be board approval. The board say, we're gonna count these, these dollars per pupil that would go for education for our kids. So seven hundred and twenty-four dollars per adjusted pupil unit that we could levy for. That's total levy. We, we, we don't have any additional levy authorities, so we didn't go to the state and say, we need an extra five hundred dollars per pupil unit. We can't cover our operating costs. And that would be where the board, we would go to the vote. It would go to a referendum vote in November. We have not, never had an additional operating authority in this district. It's always been what the state has set us up besides with the board to have approval on. So, I mean, it's great that this district's never needed additional referendum authority. We had to go up to a vote for that. You guys have voted on the bond vote. So that is our debt service. Now from the order, that's like, that's Gerard's, that's, I mean, I.
So, yeah, I would just add, um, the majority, I think it's far more than the majority of the school districts in the state and the state. So I have to have it. The very thing that we've never had. Which speaks well for this district.
Well, is it three hundred and fifty-one school districts in Minnesota? Yep, and our, we're at three hundred and forty-one or three hundred and forty-two on funding on, on dollars per student, so.
Yes, you got it.
We have very property tax poor.
So, and these, these dollars are, you know, above fifty, fifty dollars. We pay half, they pay half. So it's what we've asked for to try to equalize it a little bit, but they, they still need to work around outstate Minnesota. There's no doubt about it. Our problem is, is we're too small and we're, we're not special enough to get the money that the other schools in outstate Minnesota get, so.
And the other, the other, I don't wanna say detriment, but the other issue with this district is we don't have a lot of industry to bring those our tax base up where we can, hon- honestly, industry gets taxed more than residential and agriculture. So that's been, that's one of the reasons we're considered property tax poor and and there's, we are up really three hundred and forty-one or two, up three hundred and fifty-one down the line of money that we receive because of, um, our net tax capacity. So it is, for me, I'm always gonna advocate for, for max because we do use it and it's important for this district and, um, we don't have any additional operating dollars that we levy, so it's, it is really fortunate that this district, for being as property tax poor as we are, um, that we, we have the fortunate ability to not have to levy for more operating.
So we're dead of thumbs.
Yeah, I would also add, um, because we don't have a high rate of people bringing in this free and reused lunch. That plays an unbelievable role in how much money we get because almost every formula the state uses to bring dollars here, also it's equated with the number of free and reused lunches. That's a pitch for people to fill out.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. I get it. Everybody should.
Absolutely.
All right, with that, I'm gonna move that we approved the property tax levy for a second.
I'll say it.
I just have, I just wanted to.
Go ahead. I was gonna ask.
Totally agree, because all the time it's been, voters could vote on this if we left it. And you're telling me that's changed.
That changed in two thousand and fifteen. Legislature, legislature moved that four hundred and twenty-four dollars into making it tier two. So now there's a tier one board approval and a tier two with different equalization factors. So that did change in last year's levy. That, that is true. I mean, you can check with M P, but yes, there is no vote, any additional board approval.
There's no board approval on any of that.
No, unfortunately. I, I know, I know you like that and, and I do too. I mean, it's nice to have our public. But, but you guys are given the ability to under levy. That's, that's what the, that's what the M P and the state has said, okay, we don't have any board approval, but you have a board, that is that in your hands to make that. That, does that, that makes sense, right?
Kind of, yeah. Um, and then we go back to the, have you ever recommended that we under?
I will be honest, no. I'm not, I'm not, yeah, I, I'm not proponent of levying that. Nice to have some dollars to work with, but again, that would be my position as, as financial.
Then Director Garrett, Gerard, uh, he asked a good question. Last time we were going through this, I don't know if you remember, but he said, how much do you need? How much does it cost to run a school? And we got that to, now this.
It's different, it's different every year ago. I mean, it depends on how many kids we have in this district. This year, we're down to twenty-three kids and that, that's two hundred and thirty, you know, it's two hundred and thirty thousand. I mean, you know what, we're still getting saved among the staff right now. Utilities may go up. I mean, so when you say, how much does it take? Well, every year it could change. It's, you know, it's an estimation of what it could take. I mean, I can't give you a concrete number because our, our children, our child numbers change every year. So, I mean, I wish I could say it was concrete, but it's really not.
Director Garrett?
So Don, how much would this, if we levy that max, do you have a, an idea on how much revenue we bring into our agency revenue?
You wanna say levy dollars?
Yes.
Okay, total? Yes. So we are down in the general fund. That includes operating, which is unreserved. That's our operating. That includes our operating capital. That includes our long-term facilities maintenance. Um, and then all those restricted accounts we will levy in the general fund is six hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. Community service, forty-three thousand. Debt service is really, doesn't matter because we can't under levy debt service and we can't under levy community service, but I decided to levy. But that's what they're, but in debt service, we are gonna levy for one million, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. So when I say our levy is seventy-some percent debt service, that's back in that shell.
So really of that then, if we wanted to under levy, the amount that we could try to under levy would be that six hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars?
And not all of that.
And not even all of that.
Right, because a, some of that obviously is aid. And, um, of that, like I said, you could under levy that seven hundred and twenty-four dollars for, I guess, a pupil. And when we talk about that finance committee, I come up with exacts at that point. But this whole six hundred and fifty-one thousand includes restricted accounts.
Very good, yeah?
Thank you.
It was moved by Director Hackett and seconded by Director Lang to approve the max tax levy. Any discussion?
Uh, it's the proposed tax levy.
That match.
Oh, I missed the word proposed.
Missed to certify not to.
I'm gonna read it again then. It was moved by Director Hackett and seconded by Director Lang to certify the proposed map, proposed tax levy of the maximum. Any other discussion? All in favor say ayes?
Aye.
I'll oppose. I'll abstain. Motion passed at six zero zero. Moving on, approval donations. Um, I don't have the resolution.
Do you have the resolution?
You have the resolution. I do not have a copy of the resolution.
I apologize.
She's putting it up there for.
It was moved by Director Lang. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Director Gerard. Board member Lang, Mary Lang introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Director Gerard, Gerard seconded. Whereas the designation of an identified official with authority for education, identity, access management of Minnesota Department of Education, M P, professional educator. Oh, this isn't the right one. That's not the right one. We have a
randomly one. Can you read that?
Tony, right next to me, there should be another one.
All right, let's start over here. Somebody wanna move this?
I have a motion.
All right.
One second.
All right. There we go, yeah, that's done. It was moved, member, member Lang introduced the following resolution and moved for its adoption, and Director Gerard seconded it, whereas anonymous individual has generously offered to donate a two hundred and fifty dollars to the Royalton School Jurisdiction, whereas the conditions of this gift are for use in the custodial department, therefore being resolved by the Royalton School Board gratefully accept the gift. Motion for adoption of the following resolution was duly seconded by Director Gerard, and upon our own call, will be taken there, unfollowed, voted, any discussion on this before we vote? Therefore, in favor, or, if you vote aye, you're voting there, in favor of, if you vote nay, you're voting against, Director Lang?
Aye.
Director Gerard, Garrett?
Aye.
Director Hall?
Aye.
Director Hackett?
Aye.
Director Gerard?
Aye.
Director Petron?
Aye.
So, the following voted in favor of Lang, Garrett's, Hall, Hackett, Gerard, and Petron, the following voted against, no one, the following abstained, no one. The following resolution, six zero zero, approved this twenty-eighth day of September twenty twenty, that's done. Alright, approval of resignations.
I'll move that.
There we go, approval of resignations, Ashley Van Heel, Becky Buzdok, and Luann Smaller. Colder. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All who oppose? All who abstain, motion passed six zero zero. Approval of new hires, Royalton School Board will approve the following hires based upon the findings of each individual, each of those individuals' background check, license, your status, and disciplinary part from the Minnesota Department of Ed. Natalie Milbrand, Yolanda Nelson, Aaron Meyer, Kelly Gottson. Temporary leave, Carrie Meek. Approval of temporary leave, oh, that, that's different. Um, any discussion?
I have a question.
Go for it.
What is point of sales?
Go for it, Don.
That is a cashier to include service, right now we only have one, and we, we have two lines going, and especially with everything going down. Um, we used to have two, and then Miss Smith resigned last year after she was unwell, and, uh, so we did hire her, we hired her then three hours and a four hour. So this individual does the cashiering with another one, and then wipes down tables and stuff between shifts, and so, um, that's the point of sales. Not necessarily wiping down the tables, but the cashiering. Getting the kids' numbers in, making sure that their board is reversible, and stuff like that.
Are any of the people here today? Alright, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All who oppose? And all who abstain, motion passed six zero zero. Approval, um.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, we don't have a motion yet.
I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry, guys. That's my bad. Who wants to second it?
I did.
It was moved by Director Petron and seconded by Director Lang, approved. Natalie Milbrand, Yolanda Nelson, Aaron Meyer, Kelly Gottson.
Temporary leave.
Yeah, temporary leave for Carrie Meek. Alright, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All who oppose? All who abstain? Both go six zero zero, this time I'm thrilled, that first time was just a practice one. Alright, policy reading and approval, uh, first reading of policies, um, two oh eight and five thirty-four. We, we read them, uh, last Monday, I believe, um, anybody have some input, get it to Superintendent Pumps or myself?
You can find those online, uh, if you'd like to, uh, indoor, if you're in our campus, please let me know, we look forward to having input from the public, along with teachers, or any of these. The second reading is, uh, change the name along with the procedure, which has gone through a lot of legislation over the past few years, so it's to update that policy totally. That was the one that was supposed to, yes, I think it was seven, uh, thirty-one or something.
Uh, second reading is number two oh six and five thirty-three. The third reading was information technology, school weapons, the pledge relations, and public data requests. We're also gonna approve four fifty-two, five oh one, five thirty-one, and seven twenty-two, right? So, do we, somebody wanna move that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second.
Who seconded it?
I will.
It was moved by Director Hall and seconded by Director Lang to approve four fifty-two, five oh one, five thirty-one, and seven twenty-two. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All who oppose? All who abstain? Motion passed six zero zero. Moving on, item G, pad mount easement requests for Minnesota Power.
A bit of poach play, Minnesota Power, um, they want to install a secondary transformer, I very much like the picture of one of them. That is just a sample picture, um. About the same size transformer that supplies the school on the east side of our school, had a media center, be very similar. Um, they want to put this device up on the northeast corner of our property, up by, basically the northeast corner of the student parking lot, they've got some stakes and flags and whatnot up there right now. This, uh, secondary transformer, they're saying will make our power supply basically to the whole city much more reliable. Uh, we've had some storms in the past, I don't know, years since I've been here, probably three times, and one of the schools have been shut down, the power outages and whatnot, where the, the lines get blown down, the lines run east west up and down Nature Road to the big transformer station, that's just, uh, towards the power lines over there, and, um, they're saying that this transformer is gonna make, should those lines go down, it's, uh, something where they can switch over quickly in the, um, stage of power. Looking first, like, what it, it's, uh, they're looking for a fifty by fifty foot easement, which they would put a ten by ten cement pad on, and then they plant their transformer on, and in the location that they're gonna do this, uh, that they want to do is, um, they're a not-used property by the school, we're just, uh, clearing the ground, we give them all the, and they don't foresee any, uh, issues with sports or, or anything, it's not, not used property.
Mr. Chair, yes, um, in the picture, there is a square thing on the ground, then there's three cylindrical items up on the top of the house, which one are you parking on?
With the square thing on the ground, the transformer.
They'll have a, imagine all the, twelve-foot chain of things, but why do they have it?
No, they plan to, uh, put some, like, parking lot and pallets in front of it, on the, uh, the west side of it, so, if anybody got out of control of the parking lot, they would hit the pallets first.
How about if anybody got out of control of this one, or mess with it?
We don't mess with the one we have on the east side of the school, I don't know why they would have that.
I'm surprised they wouldn't have checked it.
They're saying it's a very low maintenance item, um. It would, it would be basically there to install it, and probably look at it at another time if needed.
What's the timeframe on this?
Um, they'd like to get it in before the free term.
We have one question tonight, you generally like to send this to a legal professional? Obviously, we're, they're inside, but, you know, this is the general reason, but we got it today.
Is there any, did he know that happened?
The, uh, probably will plant another pole or two in the ditch on, on Nature Road, and then from that point, all the way to the parking lot by the bridge, they plan to, uh, direction of more, for line in from there. Very, not a basis for the property, really.
Mr. Gerard, is this property the school already owns, or they use it? What are they willing to pay for this property? What are they willing to pay for this property, or they don't have to, or what's the deal?
This will be an easement given to the, by the school.
So we're giving them these, we're not making them pay for these.
Well, it's a school, I don't know, because.
Says for good and valuable consideration.
I would think it could reduce the bills with some of the energy offsets that we work with them. I, I have my own plan, I, I granted access to the phone company so that I can get internet and, uh.
They've been very gracious to us.
Yeah.
With the, uh, the ball holes.
I would agree.
Is, uh, one, one, and, washes the other kind of thing, they've, they've been very good to us, helping us with that. I guess, you know, pretty important decision, but it, they first wanted to install it more in the front of the school, like, whether the school sign is on the corner there, and I said, no, I want to, so we, uh, for a different location, which is.
Should, yeah, we need a new electric sign out there.
Yes, thank you, that sign, that sign is going to be, uh, saying that some, uh, etching will be touched up.
Alright, any other discussion on this, we're then tops?
Yeah, the only thing I could say, we could, uh, approve this name, uh, with a contingency on it with our lawyer's approval. I don't see any problem, and it's Tony said that's what I was gonna say, which way is, it's, uh, they, we're a lot of help this time with a number of different things, it's, uh, scratch our back, you scratch our, we'll scratch yours, like, uh, I just want our lawyer to look it over and see if there are any.
If in fifty, twenty years, the district would ever want to use that property or need that property, I'm certain that it would, probably their biggest customer.
Hey, I'm gonna pull the board on this one, who wants to vote on it, I mean?
I'd like to, uh, have a quick vote to suspend the rules.
Yeah, we have to, he made it into.
Make the motion to suspend the rules, it's possible, not living on second, first time.
I'll second that, any discussion on that?
Oh, I have a contingency about.
Yeah, what I read, you were trying to, not just pour down. Right now, we're not suspending the rules. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor of suspending the rules, say aye? All who oppose? Okay, all who abstain? Motion passes five, one, zero. Alright, now with the rules suspended, uh, I'm making a motion to grant the easement subject to our lawyer's approval. I'll second, right? It was moved by Director Hackett and seconded by Director Garrett's to approve the easement to Minnesota Power, subject to a lawyer's approval, our lawyer's approval. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All who abstain? All, no, I'm sorry, all who object? Is that you there?
I'm abstaining.
All who abstain? Motion passes five, one, zero. That was very cool, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that, alright, motion passes, I'm back, moving on. I assume the rules are not suspended anymore? Thank you. Minnesota State High School, like, football and volleyball participation.
Um, a lot's changed in the past week. Um, cross country's been very strong, uh, they've been planning to go to the, uh, home now, uh, that would not be our control. Uh, but also otherwise, the motion for our activities have been very strong, at the meeting, um, other activities, the ball play is getting going as well. So those are the most, making the biggest changes, uh, was basically max, past Monday, a special meeting, to reinstate ball club law, volleyball law, uh, with some stipulation, volleyball's got fourteen competitions in total, will have, uh, a set of CDs max, and not unanimous, but we voted to play each other home away, play, meet our home teams, we'll play every seven, all other seven teams to pool twice, once home, once away. Volleyball's gonna have to play in the central and north gyms, because we're gonna take all seven of the south gyms, and that's where they begin practice today. Um, football, uh, football's six competition, three home, fully away, uh, it's not traditional schedule as we have, um, their first game is next Friday night, at Sears, uh, volleyball meeting is maybe Thursday, uh, we go to a sickness, and then we're home for two against Cleveland, and holding for, and we're away at, uh, Long Prairie Drive Field, and then home at Morris, that'll be veterans, maybe, and, and, that rounds out our schedule, um. Anticipates a section event.
Excuse me, Don?
Yes, sorry.
I didn't ask you to, it, it's getting completely.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I.
Alright.
Anticipate section events for, uh, volleyball, I don't know what capacity it's going to be, a whole section event for the number of teams involved. Uh, for football, they're anticipating everyone makes section in the end, uh, but they're gonna round out the last weekend of section competition, uh, weekend of Thanksgiving, as the home is. Uh, what that looks like and where that is, end of the year, it could be, uh, most snow, or it could be cold and very, very snowy, so we don't know, we can just expect, but at least we have a structure. Uh, we'll be streaming the events, uh, football, C-12 volleyball, energy, divorce, volleyball, uh, do whatever we can to, to allow. Do whatever we can to allow people to watch.
Sorry, none, none of these events are not, are we allowing people to come in?
Football, football is capped at per NPH, and the rules guidelines, uh, two hundred and fifty or twenty-five percent of the stadium capacity, whatever is less. So we are max capacity at two hundred and fifty spectators. Players, the officials, the coaches, it's considered one pod. That is not counted towards two fifty, but then everybody else would. Uh, indoor events, um, yeah, at the H and the E is, and the high school is telling us, don't indoor spectators for indoor events. So, central game workers, uh, they've given us clear game time rules, uh, who can be at the head table. Um, where, where, um, G B and C squad players after they're playing, they can stay and watch, provided they follow, post visiting protocols in the stands, but that's it. Um, they're not allowing us to get anybody else into the facility. Uh, lots of CMC schools have decided, uh, to reduce and limit locker usage, so, we'll be changing gear for football and for volleyball, the transport to the events, playing, um, and then another bus to come home.
Yeah, volleyball.
So are you gonna open up football games for two fifty?
That, that seemed to be the, the question of the last week and a half, is how do we get to that number? Uh, different schools are doing differently. Um, I've heard everything from, we are having no visiting pass, one hundred and fifty home spectators, down to, um, a hundred and fifty for home, and then, like, uh, and a hundred for visitors. Um, I've heard everything from vouchers to, you collect the money and then cut us a check the next week for what you took me to the gate. Um, and everything in between. And, and that's, that's a logistical thing that I don't believe we're gonna get to the right spot. It's gonna be a whole thing, even though we have district football AEs, want as much clarity in what we can, cannot do, especially with the week to be, for consistencies on points, but, it's, it's gonna be probably, most likely left up to us inside, what, how we get to that number.
There you go. So, if I'm number two fifty one?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know if we're going to, to do that, you know, I, I get it, um.
If I'm two fifty and my wife is two fifty?
Um, that, that, that's tricky point, you know, we have, right now, we have fifty, fifty one football players that are gonna play.
They don't count them.
But if they get three tickets per family group, that gets us to our one fifty one. And then you've got fifty people from older than we are on their team, and then they take two tickets, now we're at a two fifty. Um, I got, I got an email from my A D, I mean, a conference that said, we are just doing families only. These will be a lot of tickets that we're gonna get for home families, these are basically way, way better. If you don't inch your backs last, go by Wednesday, you can reuse those and then give those to, family members or students or whoever, um. But it's probably not gonna be a lockout stadium, it might be.
You need to publicize that.
Yeah, and, and as soon as, as soon as we can hammer something down, it's, that needs to go along, not only for understanding volleyball procedures, for, for streaming every Monday from Facebook Live. You don't need an account, Facebook account, those people don't. Uh, you don't need a Facebook account to watch Facebook Live. So every Monday, we can create a lead in advance, we can best. So if we have something on Tuesday and Thursday, I can throw links out, hope early in the week. And I gotta let people know, this is, this is what we're gonna have. Because our first volleyball game is next Wednesday, along with another cross, out of cross country.
What about, what do you hear? Maybe any changes for middle school?
Um, we, well, generally, baseball's off, although we're not for our students' pools. Uh, we thought it was best to ride out those seasons, have them to them. Um, junior high football is going to be very, very difficult to do after NDA. It's October, the third week of October, and to try to hit a sixty season in, in October and November is gonna be miserable. And it's not gonna be enjoyable. So as long as, plus six and perhaps seven of many like CMC schools committed to playing football, as soon as we can get outside, committing people at the end of the school year, we can get six or seven games. Uh, the other hard one is junior high volleyball. When is the best time to play that? Is it, is it the afternoon game or a sixty eight season, remember? Not knowing what we can do for junior high basketball yet? Or do we wait until the spring and pair it up with, uh, junior high volleyball, junior high football? See, now this is their dedicated season. Uh, what gives us the best opportunity to have, to have that season? Uh, that seems to be the question that, that we're gonna be discussing at our October seventh CMC meeting.
Anybody else wanna talk about volleyball and volleyball? Okay. Moving on, volleyball fundraiser.
Um, so with, um, board control, it's in everything counts. Fundraisers must be, before they begin, go for you to say this is a legit fundraiser. Um, and, and that came to my attention this year, and last year, when first year under board control, we have to bring that to you. Volleyball would like to begin a fundraiser with adrenaline, the company that's established in our area. Um, I, I personally work with them, I'm in the order with the old guards, maybe a lot of that, like, old guards, and I have an incentive to cut my kids and turtles. Uh, volleyball, I reached out to them, or they reached out to, uh, to the program, I'll do their fundraiser. Now, selling things like cookie dough, tumblers, that sort of thing, uh, to, to raise money for volleyball. Does that have to be a hold in?
Do you know with that company, Tony, or with this adrenaline, if they take a certain percentage of donations?
Yeah, they always, they always take something off the top, um, with a specific percentage. Um, a lot of them, a ten percent off top, um, so it's a lot more. Um, but he, he, we, we only worked with him before the past, he got crazy.
I just don't know whether, I think it was, I don't remember what company that was, like, you know, after people find that out, you know, it's like, we maybe wanna make people aware that that, you know, I guess, if it was an opportunity for me personally, I'd rather give my nephew fifty bucks instead of buying cookie dough in there or make it again.
And, and that's, that's the thing that you get a lot of times, is I'd rather give you money and get stuff.
And can people do that?
They can, they can certainly don't, they, uh, it's gotta be, if you're.
Well.
Yeah, I would guess that that could be a fall to wine, huh?
Yeah, I mean, to keep clean, a clean record, um, math over, writers, I mean, fun, actual fundraisers that are fun. You can do a cash fundraiser, but you have to have a, you have them to have an accountability report, and you have to have a purpose for that one. So, it, and it gets stick agents over a hundred dollars, maybe twenty.
And, and that was, that was, you know, last year, you, you stopped me on the basketball one, and the young man one. Um, that, that was the motivation for that, is why you force, you do things and stuff where it gets sixty, forty cut.
Right.
And some of them where it's a hundred percent paid profit or ninety-five, five profit. Um, but before we do any more of those, if I said, um, volleyball.
Right, and I think people are, I mean, you know, we all realize there's gonna be a cut off the top when there's companies involved, but just, people aren't really, you know, it's more, you know, like, and it's okay. And, and explain to them the reasoning why we can't just do a cash, you know, fundraiser, I think, then, you know, as long as people don't wanna have the time, I guess.
Don?
And I just wanna, I'll keep you back off what someone said. Um, under, and we did do this last year, so I would say we may get some feedback from our owners this year, with everything going on, with moving to next December, the board approval last year. And we might have to gray area, I might, I might, I might get some flack for that, but I did let Tony know, we, the board has to approve all fundraisers before it counts, so it's for the economy. So that's why it's on the agenda. Any student activities that propose as a fundraiser needs to come to the board before the fundraiser, then we can. We have to have it in the minutes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'll make the motion. All right. I'll second. It was moved by Director Pichon and seconded by Director Garrett, to approve the volleyball fundraiser by adrenaline. Any discussion?
Um, is this the first time we've seen this?
This is the one.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose.
Their policy is, you know, we must be allowed to suspend rules.
Oh, that's what she meant by the first night.
Yeah. That's our policy. It allows us to deliver and get help.
What's the timeline on this? Can this wait till next meeting?
Volleyball started, it's our next day.
I'll propose to suspend, um, the rules on guessing item, ten aye and ten no.
Any more?
Well, the, the next one, the next one is, yeah, they, a football fundraiser. Um, they work with the Metex company, my two FFA advisors are here, shall we want to get them right here? If they're questioned, they would want to be on, at, at handles. Um, that company is, and the adrenaline, they everything to contact us as far as pickup, and for paying, and for all that signing up. Um, and, and this is better, kind of their annual fundraiser. Um, they would like to be more limited about NDA, you said? NDA is typically when they begin that sale, which is in, for athletes.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Okay, since Brad brought to my attention that, uh, that, uh, other motion was not in line, so that one I just threw out. There's a new motion to suspend the rules for items I M J. It was moved by Director Garrett and seconded by Director Pichon. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. I'll abstain. Um, the suspension of the rules for I M J passes, zero, zero. Someone wanna move the volleyball fundraiser?
I'm motion.
I'll second.
It was moved by Director Home and seconded by Director Pichon, to approve the volleyball fundraiser by adrenaline. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll go oppose. I'll abstain. Motion passes six, zero, zero. All right, going on to FFA, you wanna speak to that one?
Sure, um, Metex, the one that puts on the fees fundraiser. Um, and it's, uh, for, for places time, solid fundraiser for FFA program. Uh, the most generous people stand, do a good job of getting out there and selling. Um, they deliver to the house, so they help people that are confident in school. Uh, the contact us pickup that they're now instituting, allows for all stuff to be dropped off. Um, they didn't put the vehicles, they deliver to the houses, same thing with money, same thing with sign up. There is a traditional clipboard writing down, this is what you want, this is what you get. Uh, but there is ads online option, that you can do, um, even on social media. Tap on the link, go to the link, put in the code, support that specifically, here, here, the other thing, okay? Um, so they, the, the Metex company's done their due diligence and made sure that, we're doing a fundraiser, whether it's nine to one. Uh, specifically, the cuts, uh, comes down to pricing.
I think I'm gonna phrase it specifically, I don't know if that gets, we're trying to make support our spot.
Yeah, discussion, questions? I'll move it.
I'll second.
Moved by Director Hackett and directed by Sir, Director Lane, to approve the FFA fundraiser, food sales. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. And I'll abstain. Motion passes six, zero, zero. All right, going back to having our rules. The tower lease. You wanna speak to that, John?
Yeah, and, and it's, uh, just a matter of, I wanted to let everybody know, it's down there, uh, it's time to renew the lease. Uh, the company offers us two options, one is a thirty year lease, which they'll give us thirty thousand dollars upfront, and then also pay us, uh, a thousand dollars plus two percent every year that we're in the lease. It's not one lease for thirty years, it's approval of five weeks, if you want, six years. Think I guessed that right, or it's five, pardon me, six leases, five. The other choice is to do a forty year lease, they will give us forty-five thousand dollars upfront as soon as everything passes and goes through. This is in the early stages, and with the same contingency of a thousand dollars, uh, plus two percent per year, where we are right now. Uh, I put it on their table like a noun, uh, just so you know, it's pretty interesting, John is very aware of this. We were contacted, uh, last spring by a different leasing company that was trying to pirate this. Uh, then we were contacted about six weeks ago by the people that actually run that tower, which is Verizon, and offshoot them, trying to, uh, pirate the tower lease. Both of them are less than what would be offered by the company that now holds the lease. Obviously, once they send us the lease, I have some concerns, uh, it's a pretty thick thing, I turned it over to our lawyer to look at. One thing I don't wanna do, uh, is to make, make sure, I wanna do this, make sure that, let's say they're done with the tower, they're reasonable for taking the tower down. We should have nothing to do with that, and I could see if the case where that tower pays. The reason they wanna do five year leases and not just create forty, is they don't wanna be locked in, because, the way technology is showing, David might be able to talk more on this, uh, but I'm not asking to do that. This is just the preliminary, I can see somewhere down the line where we don't need towers. And, uh, when that day comes, I even discussed that with him in the end. He said, yeah, you're right on that, that's why we do the five year leases. So to me, it's Mark and Ryder initially, we talked, I don't like this deal, I'll sign that lease, but that was because for, you know, for forty years or thirty years. But that's because all the, that's what, all they were offering was the money not upfront, they just give us that all the time. Same amount of money, whether it's thirty years or forty. I think we're wise to do forty, I just want you to think about it as a board, if you have questions for me, those are questions that I'll take to them and also bring to our lawyer.
Oh, I'm, oh, right up there.
I think it's been up there for, I wanna say, ten years, and that's the main one right back there. Is it longer than here? Okay, so, that's at least twenty-one years, you know that.
Can they add anything to?
That's why we go, go up there, what they can do, uh, at my corporate charge, we actually have one, uh, tower there, and, uh, same company, Verizon built a second tower. What they did was rent lower levels of the tower for other companies. The lower you are, the less reception you get. Here, we're, we've got the, uh, one tower, which is T-Mobile, it's rent now, and then that tower there, you know, it's on the other side of the road, which is, uh, Verizon, they could add other pieces to it, they could sub leasing as well.
Could go bingo too.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's a good question, that's what we need some thought, like I said, couple lines together if you want.
Well, yeah, I wonder what's on there right now.
I mean, they used to, they had.
What's on the tower?
It's strictly Verizon and they've updated it, and we already know they updated some of that, updated for G five.
So it's maybe a weird one.
Uh, whatever it is for, for, uh, phones, yeah, it's all Verizon.
You know, I, I think we've got to limit what to go on there because we've worked on things that can, if you, if you get within certain distance. But is there anything stopping from doing that?
I, I would, I don't have a radiation limitation.
Yes, yeah, something like that.
Oh, yeah, it is, it's got a.
We are proud of kids who need, um, to do.
Yeah, radiation limitation, maybe get to the mark, yeah.
Let at least know what they're doing.
I think it would be better to, to, shorter lease, impossible, right? Because typically things, she, I know we talked about the mom, but I think we'd be having teams force shorter because then we need to go with she, we need to get more money, we need to get a higher percentage, so I guess not too many were, I don't know as well, but I don't know, it'd be interesting to see.
What I saw from the document, it couldn't negotiate for thirty years.
Thirty, thirty is a bit.
Yeah, I mean, so after five years, I mean, in thirty years, where's towers going to be done? By getting your money upfront, forty years, you may not have that, so it would be a problem.
Or it may be that you'll have five companies bidding against each other in five years.
All right, any more work on the lease?
Yep, but I, and this won't get done until probably after the first of the year.
Okay, it's going to be an ongoing discussion.
Yep, I'll, I'll update it every time I get it, but I think it's important to put it out there and also for our public to hear about it because they might, uh, have some input to or ideas.
Okay, moving on, and Alan, is that just release?
Uh, and I'll, I'll just start it and I'll turn it over to Phil. Uh, again, I'm going to say this, this came up in the discussion because one of our concerns is we're talking about how, I've said this before, would be ideal for us, if we could isolate and keep pods together. Pod, uh, to help everybody understand what pod is, it, it's a group of students that stay here. If we could do it at the secondary, it'd be wonderful because the house secondaries are set up. And so I, I said, one of the, one of the many different things, uh, that my concerns are, is mixing our pods up. The more we mix them up, the more the problem, which a lot of, oh, oh my gosh, my last thing was religious. When we put them there, excuse me, when we set them over to religious training, we're shut into death repeatedly. And that was a concern, and I said, why don't you talk to the religious leaders in town, Phil, and Phil went ahead with it.
Thank you. So again, there's, uh, prices, we've been talking about two opportunities, come on, two, that's the other part is,
after starting the school year, you're just seeing the long supervision, I have to, for our undeveloped, directing things and adjusting things. Think about sending the kids over, I don't know, the one site, two sites, was a little concerning. And so I did take the initiative on that, I, I think probably maybe because it was a surprise, we're assuming agreement this year, that probably was a good idea. But I, I'm a member of Holy Trinity Church, very involved members, I'm very supportive, which is good education. I did plenty of hardening, process of that. And what I really want to see is both groups really feeling great about what they have. We don't feel great, whether it's a COVID year or not, we can not feel good about school because once a week, our children are missing a week. It's just not fair to the teachers, kids, that's been an ongoing frustration for many years. Even if a visitor comes to the building, they say, you do what on Wednesday mornings? You have a reading consult, yeah, trying to explain to them. And honestly, throughout the state, that model has become rare, rare. Also, so many places have looked at other models to do things, but I really want it to be the one that evolves, so it's not anything evolved against the current religious program. Religion, religious education for you, that's an idea, that's a concept, there isn't just a long way to do that. And there are a few leaders in the church who have wanted to explore other models, they want to look at different things, they've already purchased the materials in the meetings with the parents, they have a home base program, they're starting with group setting meetings, so it isn't that I just said, whoa, we're not doing this. So there was some invitation, and also that we really do want to look into the models, I just, our church, uh, to the highest level, classes. There isn't anything negative going on here, other than it's probably time that we look at different models where everyone's, we've been doing now, which is, get some of their, our groups, some of them achieved that thesis period of time. Um, it's harder, harder to find, I'm speaking as a member of the church, harder to find volunteer teachers. And there are some really excellent models coming on, churches, um, throughout the state, and I'm looking at some of those models, are excited about the models being used. So it wasn't like it was a master plan, but like I said, the COVID kind of created a crisis, looking at that, starting conversations, and discovering that there really were opportunities, people are looking at things differently. I think it's worth giving a chance to see how it works. I think I did meet the people at the church, I think it ended with the leave the door, the crack open a little bit as far as future years, and I agree to that, there could be discussion. This model isn't working, or if they aren't finding other models, we want to look again, kind of cooperation we have to source, it'd just be something that's cool, I think. So just sharing, Brad coming down, I really believe it's a great opportunity, we've heard it, it really created. Like I said, there's some key people in the church that want to see it, it's not me telling, church, you've got to do it this way, I think it's really an opportunity to do things differently. And change is hard, great changes is going to upset the people. Uh, but there's nothing wrong with you have other models to accomplish what you want to do. I can remember, there's quite a few years, we go to the heart of moving from every other day kindergarten, full day kindergarten, and it was a big upset. There were parents there that were very upset and wanted to do that. Well, now you won't go anywhere to save them, they're not doing every day kindergarten, everybody being very, very supportive, but I'm just saying that sometimes change is difficult, but I'm trying to create a weave against the day, but looking at together, what can we do when we're both sides of the battle?
Go ahead. Um, which churches did you meet with?
Uh, it's only Trinity Church, we talked about, we took this picture.
Two of them? And, and what agreement did you come to?
We use a different model this year, uh, the year, next year, it's not a final decision. I'm just like to leave the door cracked open just a little bit to see how this is working and what are the possibilities? Possibly looking at after school programs that we might be able to support in some way. I don't know the other possibility, we've looked at after noon before, we have, we have a PD, music, Spanish, children runs all day, we have just one with a child, and there just isn't the time.
Um, I'm kind of, kind of confused, um, is it the time of day that's the problem?
It's been, uh, pulling on rain instruction.
It's the time of day. And you can't change your.
Okay, easily, but it isn't just the time of day, it's what's the effect, most effective. I'm not talking as a church, what's the most effective model for providing, uh, religious education? Church is looking at how do we get more parents involved, uh, more engaged that way? Should we be, uh, providing religious education for parents who don't even attend the church, or the church? So there's other questions, and what about some of these other models, where they're giving positive reports about, uh, using Sunday mornings, using some, uh, home base days, using some evening meetings, and really working at, moving that community around, some of it, what's the most effective way?
Okay, I'm not really buying the COVID argument at all, because, you know, you got, um, forty soccer players from K through five, you got eighteen grade two and three like football players, so as far as social distancing, at those ages, I just can't. I, I can't buy the COVID nineteen argument.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
I'm just going to say the difference is that's outside, outside has different clothes, it's fun still, yeah. What, what is the difference rule for outside? You can remove your mask when the level of exertion makes, makes pretty difficult.
Right.
So when they're outside running and increasing their respiration, you can.
But, you know, realistically, the science of it and the vapor and the drop, if you're trying to get that soccer ball from under the kid, you know, it's hard to convince me that the science works, I can't about avoiding water drop, like, uh, vapor from breath, being able to have a contact, but also with football and volleyball. Uh, I just, I have a hard time buying the COVID argument. The scheduling argument, I can kind of see that. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I've got a question, is this, uh, is this something that the board gets to decide, or is this something that the principal decides and tells us?
That's a good question, you try to.
I, I.
I think it's something that the churches and you as a principal of the building should be deciding. I mean, that, it does fall under the law.
It's good to hear.
And it also falls on our church leaders, you know, things.
Mary, well, actually, according to state statutes, one twenty-eight point two-two, it's a parental decision, not a school or a religious family.
So then we have to know.
So what we have to do is we have to have the parents. It's really not up to the board, it's not, it is up to the.
Right.
So, so.
Yeah, um, in the clarified memorial, the state statute on it, there is a given amount of time, actually daily, that, uh, parents can withdraw students from school for religious purposes. Uh, and that, that might work around even on a daily basis in a formal charge with somebody else.
Yeah, the, you impressed on your dad.
Totally.
John, John's wrong, man.
Okay, um, I was, I, I, um, but don't want to understand, um, the difficulty that is to, I'm with interfering with reading, what you're saying is creating a whole thing during religious time for each prayer. You don't have all four prayers at one time, you have a praise, third and fourth, so almost there, at religious day. Third and fourth prayers are only to read for emergency, so then the next one comes over and they're saying at that same time, at the time that they're doing religious prayer, they're only focusing on reading.
I, I don't.
I don't have an understanding of that.
I don't know how to schedule a lot of those monsters, so.
And one hour out of the five days of the week. President Friday.
Yeah, actually, a parent can do a cumulative three hours per week. Um, I've got the law right in front of me here, and, uh, the, the parent can, can withdraw a student with an excused absence for religious training for cumulative three hours per week. You guys are asking for one hour per week on Friday? Or Wednesday, I'm sorry.
The church has not asked for that, they are creating their own model, they want to do a different model. I'm not seeing the key, key leaders of the church here request that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I think for the school school third week, that morning, like last year. But for the classroom, it's not the teachers, if a parent was in the classroom, classroom.
They're still, still starting at the same time for the kids at age.
Not much. How many for a meeting?
There's, there are meetings this year sometimes.
Yeah, but if there was Wednesday, the best, uh, the day, not.
There are meetings occurring at four times.
I think what she's asking, um, the teachers, in order to, um, facilitate standards based learning needed from time every week, and talk with their peers and get the standards down, um, is that still going on? Which day of the week is it?
That would be Wednesday mornings, because we have meetings Tuesday mornings and Monday morning, Thursday morning. So, Thursday morning, we could do that on Thursday. There have to be four school spirits.
Just one minute, Jeremy, do you have something to add?
I think we're really confused on this meeting, here's, perfecting the DLC type, that we did, that's the more improved, we started, I suppose. I'm not sure you don't think, when they started, we have not had that time since, in March.
This is the bell, I'm just, last week, here, for the, for the, we're using kid technical there, and we've been, you know, you have to pull longer.
Right, and that would be, I'm not, I mean, that is, that's not, that's not.
But if we look after, they extended this, it wouldn't have been that much.
I, I have a little bit of an history here with this meeting because it seems like church meeting has made it into my school board meeting. And, um, I'm not discounting anybody here, but it is state statute that if a parent wants to pull the kids, they can. And that's, that's where I'm, that's where we as a board, that's where we have to go, that's our line. So it sounds to me like, I, I, I'm not saying this to be rude, but you as parents and as a church that are pulling your kids out need to, to come with a more clear and concise. Um, it sounds like Dr. Gubata has talked to some leaders in the church, and maybe you have two factions in the church, I know we get that in the school a lot, and somehow you guys got to come together and come up with a one clear, or it's going to have to be an individualized thing, where the parents who want to do it, do it. I, and that, that's where I'm, I, I don't know if the rest of the board agrees with me on this or not, go ahead, Director.
Yeah, I, I think if, uh, you want to have, and there is some value to having, um, a group discuss religious ideas so that you don't just give the one idea, um, but, or you don't just give one kid receiving the idea. But I think, I agree, um, I don't know which churches you guys belong to and, uh, what the situation is there. But if you can come, um, with a world and unified church plan for religious training for schools, I think it would be easier for us to approve, and it'd also be easier for parents to say, yeah, it's at that time on that day, we're doing religious training. I don't think anybody's against, um, but it'd be really good if, uh, you guys came to us and said, here's our plans.
We, we, we made it against the church, we did, we did agree. So, I'm not sure what is really going on. I'm not sure what is really going on here. I think it's politics within the church. So, but we did have a meeting, we did agree with how we're.
Was there a.
They are.
Was that a local meeting?
I was called over by, priest was there, called over.
Was, was there like fifty people there or how many people?
No, I think it was a people connected to the religious.
So, ten people, five?
Do you wanna speak? But, so, just a second, she's on the floor. Go ahead, no, go ahead. No, go ahead. From the floor, please.
No, I, I think, no, I just, I don't know that we want to get into what Messiah was, right? I think, like Randy said, I think we want, need to go back to them and say, okay, we're together and hopefully them then as a religious group, like you said, can come to, okay, what does everybody want to do, right? I, I don't know who is attending that meeting. I don't know that, at least in this forum, we should be, I want to say don't care, but that's, we have to be careful, right? I mean, there's no doubt, we have to give them three hours.
We care.
Right, but that's.
But I don't know what everyone wants.
Right. Right.
Go ahead.
I guess, in my eyes, I mean, I heard about this like a week and a half ago and I did reach out to Phil. And from what I've heard tonight is that obviously you guys as church members don't feel we're involved in this discussion. Okay, so back to you, Phil, was it enough like at church? Like more of a happiness meeting and decide on religious release? I mean, because to me, I mean.
They have a parent meeting set up. My understanding, they have a religious education director organizing. It was doing that, I think she's taken the basis of that. So they called me, said they're happy with where it's going and that's where they're headed.
I'm gonna say one quick thing on this show. I truly hope you as a board are going to make this decision and not leave it up to your inspection. This is not, in my mind, as a taxpayer member, something I want one of your employees deciding. I want you as a board to say, we're gonna handle this. We're gonna make the decision when the time comes. I think that matters. It's a long delegation, this, I'm a delegate. I'm not gonna give him the authority. I'm really wondering why a principal is deciding policy and not the board? This is not something for principals to be doing.
Once again, he's not where, he's sitting in front of the priest.
Did you authorize that?
Did I offer, authorize him to meet with the priest?
Yeah.
No, because.
What, what, what are the box?
Well, I know that I as a school board member could not force a kid to go to religious education.
No, that's not the point. A changing assistant should involve the school board where you make the decision. Whatever the decision is, I would certainly hope it would be the school board making that decision. People that are voting to opt to represent us.
I just want to say, would you please stand up and declare your name for the recording? When you're, when you're addressing the board, please. We need to know that for the people that are.
My name is Dwayne Crowell.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm adulting. Yeah, I'm willing to vote to approve whatever you guys come up with. And even if it's Wednesdays, Tuesdays, I'll vote to approve that. Probably traditionally, there's a certain time when the kids go to religious. That seemed to work when my kids were doing that. I'll vote for that. I just need to know what that looks like.
I understand.
And I guess that the reason that we came to once a week release time was because it was a less of an interruption instead of pulling three kids off, you know, Monday morning, or kids off Tuesday morning and three kids off Friday afternoon. That they all go at the same time. But, I mean, we can't mandate the church to have release time out. That, that's out of my jurisdiction, so.
More of the board, do you wanna find a workable solution from you as a board to make that decision instead of a principal or a.
Sure, I have no problem doing that.
I appreciate that.
If you guys came and said, we would like to withdraw a child from school for one hour on this day, this fine.
And I know you're not under any obligation to cooperate.
No.
But cooperation, when it, when it can work, both parties.
The, the only problem I'm gonna say is that if I listen to Phil, it sounds like he's got cooperation.
Phil wants, Phil wants.
But, and, but he met with somebody too.
Right on. I do bet, parents can pull their kids at any time. That's up to them. The board should not be deciding for the parents when they pull the time. Nor should the board be voicing what works for their religious. That's on the churches that are here, whatever they decide. And all the parishioners in each one of those churches want their voice to be heard. We've said that before. And whatever they decide, they decide. And you can have your students at that time. That, that's on the parents. And I think that's very important because we do have to, it's clear in the law that there is separation between church and state. And that's, be careful when that reaches that part. It is under Phil's, you know, he is trying to find resolution that can help solve the problem. And so I would say, don't attack Phil on it. You need to sit down as a church community, have that discussion. Is, I would say, the way to go. Yeah, the board is directing Phil to do something, they have to be careful because they cannot go and manage. That is against the state statute also. They are not managing. And so, you know, I'd say, lay it out, let's see how your churches come up with resolution. Phil started a discussion. That's my consent to this.
Yeah, could, so Randy. So I, so I would struggle with. So I, I would not vote to say that all children have to release now Wednesday at three o'clock, right? So, so, so to those points, you know, I think, I, I don't, I'm not gonna dictate when everybody needs their kids, all right? So, and just to be clear, so whatever comes with the resolution, I totally agree. I, but I would say, I'm not, I think Phil as the principal leads to spearhead it from that and then you can come back and we can talk about it through the resolution. That that's, that's my观点. But I don't wanna, I'm not gonna be able to vote to say that every, you know, my kids are gonna leave on Tuesday. Right? Or I'm not, also not gonna dictate a time when the kids go either, right? So I'm not gonna say every Wednesday we dedicate this time at ten o'clock. That might work for our kids, but it might not work for Ellie's or Randy's. So I just think we need to come up with a unified resolution across the board. That works.
It's not up to the school board to decide.
No.
Churches' religious program, yes. We met, they decided to go in another direction. And the U R meeting, and I don't wanna mention names, but I'll just say, the key leaders in the church decided they wanted to go the way, and that's definitely what I wanted to see. It's not me making that decision. I'll put it, just put it this way, if leader of the Catholic Church says, no, we're not going in that direction, that would be the end. That's not how, so they're here expressing their view. They need to be at the church with their own house, expressing their view. Because it's the church that's going ahead with a different model for their church education. Again. Kind of become a political situation.
Right, alright. Run briefly. We don't know what the politics of church politics are, but we represent you. And if you come to us with a unified plan, I'll see anybody on the board saying. You're the people we represent.
And then, would you like to speak?
Yes, we would like to. Um, as you've heard already tonight, the religious program has been in our community for a long time. Phil had been pressed maybe before that he thought of an outdated model. He asked for me to support this decision. I said, you know, after for this year, okay. Um, I did tell our church that I'd be stepping away. I gave them, I told our priest that on September ninth. All our conversations before that were supporting, figuring out how to make these time work for this year to keep those pods that Phil has talked about. To try to do as many things as we could to make it safe for the children and so forth. I give my notice September ninth saying I wouldn't stay on until October fifteen. I do find it interesting. It sounds like tonight perhaps you gotta call from church and I don't know and I hardly wanna go there. But I also know that our priests could wanna, could kinda get rid of this. Priests come and go. Our community needs to be together. There are so many things that carried our community apart that I feel like the parents should have had the opportunity to weigh in on this. I have given twenty years to the program in one shape, form or another for the last four or five years. Um, I volunteered as the V R E. I have supported the program because I see the value in communities. And I see that communities are sometimes getting rid of it, saying that, you know, oh, it's inconvenient or whatever. I think Royalton really prides itself in educating the whole child. The whole child, I see spirituality being a piece of that pie. Now, if the parents, and that's what I have, you know, told parents that. The meetings that Phil speaks of, was Phil father.
Let's limit the personal names and stuff. Because it's, it's starting to be a, and.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's not my intent.
Okay, well, I'm just.
No, I mean.
I'm gonna find line, so.
What?
You're walking to find line with it, so.
Um, you know, if the parents want us to release time, then yes, they do need to have their voices heard, I guess, for future years. And cooperation. The parish and the school have worked together for years. Whether it's, you know, the school using our land for their activity deal or whatever. We've had a good working relationship. So I would like to see that we could find some resolution of offering a release time, perhaps. If that's the direction our church decides to go. Right now, both father and Phil are looking at a home-based kind of program. I think we've heard tonight also, you know, about how when you're teaching something, that the kids like being together, they learn from one another. It gives them more exposure to different ideas of how to make that base. Um, you know, to say something that Royalton is doing is rare, that doesn't make it a bad thing. Rare does not equate to bad. And, you know, perhaps this year will be just an experimental year of seeing how this program works. I've heard from other parents, people in other parachutes that have done these home-based things. Because, you know, you don't get the engagement that much need. I understand that's more the parents' side of it. But just to be clear, that decision wasn't necessarily that of the families in the community.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. I just, I'm gonna take a couple more comments than you're gonna. Just one of mine. I think it's more a board decision than an administration decision. So when they make their decision, I think we should hear it. Administration decision, that's my opinion.
It intended to be that way. The meeting was, they agreed that this year they wanted to do something. That there would be an opening in the spring, possibly looking at going back to speaking down or any model. So it wasn't like the administrative decision, but weird. And it isn't just priests, the teachers, talk to people, issues of the diocese, they also are supportive. And it isn't Phil trying to push a model or even creating the scene for that. That was already occurring. I've worked for Linda a lot of years and I have a lot of respect for her. We've worked well together. But I do share her frustration among the staff of that interference with reading. I'd say, so it's not like it's a sudden kind of thing. And it's not sudden that some of the people of the church are looking at a new model. But it isn't like, I said, you've gotta do this, make them say, oh, right. Father class says, no, it's no, it's simple as that. And, and again, at least at this time, the new religious educator is very smart. It's not, so it's not me telling them to do, it's something they've wanted to do. They're moving ahead with it and we'll see how that works. There wasn't a final decision.
Well, I'm gonna end it here and I'm gonna take the privilege of ending it on my note. Phil, I know you had a meeting with the church and I'm gonna ask you to go back and have another one. It'd just be good to, and then you people that are here, get each other's names and go back to the church and find out what's going on because when I sit here and I don't know anything, I feel like there's true stories coming out of it. So you guys have to have a unified message in, you know, maybe, maybe it's not even unified. Maybe, maybe some kids are here at least, somehow, I, I don't know. It's gonna have to come with a message. And with that, I'm gonna end it. Thank you all for coming. We're gonna move on to item L two, the fitness center. John, would you speak to that?
Yeah, and Tony, Phil here, so here's the thing. One of the things that's on our plate that we're supposed to be, women, adults in the building from outside. So right now, we're stuck in the same place we have. As a matter of fact, this meeting is in question whether we should even have this. We've heard that with volleyball, that spectators are not supposed to be inside basketball in Illinois. But if those are let up, then, then go. But I mean, I would love, and I know our community head director would love to open that up when possible, but right now, hang on. We do have limited usage, I know in the morning, but it's two in the morning. We have wrestling, coaches in here with some of the wrestling kids. What's the size of that building? Uh, the morning has, it's small, I'd say, about fifteen kids in the morning. And then we got a couple of, what, six thirty to seven thirty group that comes in. Uh, and then a couple nights, evening. And then our, our sport programs are utilizing as well. For volleyball, football, or, we're limited there, based on square footage. Uh, it's increased. It started at ten earlier in the summer, it jumped to fifteen. Based on our square footage with the number that's needed, we're about twenty-two in right time.
Go on that bit. Um, I actually asked it just to be put on the agenda because I've been getting questions from taxpayers and landlord members and fitness center. So all of those numbers of people you just mentioned, those are all students, is that correct?
Correct. Students with coaches, correct, Mr. Ron?
Yep.
Yeah, they're, they're just, well, they gave us an I R U and that's the last we heard of it.
You know, the hard part is, is the structure of the fitness center and how it's managed. It's difficult to separate out. Uh, I think we had several entrance, but we didn't separate it out. It would be different, but these, this is our building. It's difficult to allow that for a whole process. I would also say, we have a whole thing, it sounds fun to major in, but that's what they normally call for. Somebody to maintain, go through, make everything, make sure things are right. It'd be a different story too previously. What's changed is where we're coming from, we have other people from outside in the building.
There's no. Like, what's it gonna take? like, uh, what's it gonna take to open it back up to the people here or members of the scene basically in the building?
It's a tough question. I would, I might not see this one for a while. We have more access people are wanting to do this. I don't follow.
So to touch on the holes, are we reimbursing anything or have we made a decision on that? I have had that question to reimburse.
If you have that question, direct them to me with that. We we have, I'm, we're just like on a holding pattern. I don't know. Uh, but if they want to respond, have them talk to me myself and Ted and we'll share.
Okay, otherwise you're just holding it until.
Yeah, I mean, we're hoping, I don't like to talk policies, but I'm hoping that it lives sooner than later. That's my personal. That's the song. I I don't know. I'm just hoping it it lives sooner than later. We're going back. This is usual, I mean.
When you say lives, is that the.
Yeah, well, the scripture is, yeah.
All right. We down on that one? Moving on. We're gonna close the meeting for superintendent formative evaluation as presented permitted by section thirteen D point oh five subdivision three. Somebody like to move that?
I'll make that motion.
It was moved by Director Holm and directed by Director Lane, to close the meeting for superintendent formative evaluation as permitted by section thirteen D point oh five subdivision three A. All those in favor say aye. Oh, you want discussion?
I thought we did that.
Your voice is not far from here discussing.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and I didn't wanna make this issue. All right, are we okay? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All of those closed, all of them staying. Meeting's closed. Zero zero. We're gonna take a five minute break, let people get off.